The City of Wheat Ridge, Colorado for August the 12th, 2019. If you would please rise and join me with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would the clerk please call the roll?
Zachary Urban.
Present.
David Keeter.
Present.
I'm going to tell the deputy clerk your name's not Larry. Amanda Weaver.
Here.
Leah Dozeman.
Here.
George Pond.
Present.
Kristy Davis.
Here.
Larry Matthews.
Here.
Janice Hoppe.
Present.
Mr. Mayor, we have a quorum.
Thank you. We have a proclamation tonight that comes around only every 50 years. Celebrating 50 years as a city and designating August 15th, 2019, as City of Wheat Ridge Day. Whereas many communities that sprang up throughout the West were a result of gold miners who headed west to strike it rich in Colorado. And whereas once the riches of the mines played out, miners settled in the foothills with their families. And the area now known as Wheat Ridge was once rich with fields of wheat, alfalfa, asparagus, celery, and other vegetables, as well as orchards of fruit trees. And whereas Wheat Ridge truck farmers brought their produce to Denver to sell to families living in the metro area. And whereas farmers discovered the soil and climate in Wheat Ridge were perfect for the growing and harvesting of carnations. And at one time, the city was home to more than 32 carnation growers, making it the carnation capital of the world. And whereas in 1969, a group of passionate residents came together and organized a petition to put the decision to become a city to a vote on June 17th, 2019, which resulted in a resounding yes from the people of Wheat Ridge. And whereas for the past 50 years since its official incorporation on August 15th, 1969, Wheat Ridge has grown to become a bustling city with more than 24 parks, 300 acres of open space, a thriving business environment, and new commercial and residential development underway across the city. Now therefore be it resolved that on behalf of the city council and the people of the City of Wheat Ridge, I Bud Starker, Mayor of the City of Wheat Ridge, Colorado, by virtue of the authority vested in me, do hereby proclaim the observation of August 15th, 2019, oh, excuse me, August 15th, 1969, as the official incorporation date of the City of Wheat Ridge, and in celebrating 50 years as a city, proclaim August 15th, 2019, as City of Wheat Ridge Day, to honor those courageous settlers who made this area their home in the 1800s and to recognize those who had the vision in 1969 to mobilize the residents and create a new city to the west of Denver nestled between Lakewood, Arvada, and Golden, and witness thereof on this 12th day of August, 2019. Bud Starker, Mayor. And give it an applause, a great, I'd like to invite Leah Dozeman to the podium.
For the last 50 years, we have had the annual Carnation Festival to honor the incorporation of the City of Wheat Ridge. I have had the honor of serving on the board for the last five years, four of those as parade chair of the Carnation Festival. And each year we have a plate that we have made. And the last three years, we've had a plate design contest where we've had local artists submit artwork and we've selected them. The Cultural Commission helped this year. So this year's artist is Carly Piccolo. And we would like to thank the City of Wheat Ridge, so city council, city staff, and all the various departments that have worked hard with us to make this festival happen each year. Wheat Ridge Police Department stays 24 hours a day, all three days of the festival. They work really hard. Public Works, Parks and Recreation, make sure that everything happens. We have bleachers and trash picked up and everything in the park and ready to go for the festival. And this is a collaboration with hundreds of businesses, service organizations, and many of the city departments each and every year. So I want to honor the city. So 50th Wheat Ridge Carnation Parade in grateful appreciation to the City of Wheat Ridge. We just would like to thank you tremendously for helping out with this event each year.
Counselors, you have in your packets the city council meeting minutes of June 10, 2019, and the study session notes of June 17th and July 1st, 2019. If there are no corrections, we will let the minutes stand as presented. Let the record show the minutes are approved as presented. Counselors, are there any, we are at the approval of the agenda, are there any changes that anyone wishes to make to the agenda? Seeing none, we will move with the agenda as published. We are at our citizens' right to speak. Citizens who wish may speak on any matter not on the agenda for a maximum of three minutes by signing the public roster, and I have that roster here. And when I call your name, if you would please come to the podium and adjust the microphone so it's convenient for you and we can hear you clearly, and give us your name, first name and last name, if you'd spell your last name for the record and give us your address. And at the end of that, the clerk will turn on a timing device and you'll have three minutes. So our first speaker is Stan Koniz and Rachel Hultin on deck.
Hello, Council and Mr. Mayor. My name is Stan Koniz. I live at 10-100 West 33rd Avenue, K-O-N-I-Z. We've lived at 10-100 West 33rd Avenue, my wife Kathy and I, for 31 years. And just this past week, we received notice of a proposed 60-unit development directly behind our house. And while it's premature at this point to make any statement in opposition of it, I just want to let you know that the community is rallied around this issue and you will be hearing more from us in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Rachel Hultin and John McKay on deck.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Rachel Hultin, and that's H-U-L-T-I-N, and I live at 4690 Balsam Street. I just am here tonight to recognize everybody who's in this room and the people who are outside of this room who contributed to an absolutely spectacular Carnation Festival. I had the honor of being one of the judges of the parade, and it's the first time I haven't actually been in the parade. Sometimes there's so many opportunities to be in the parade, I'm surprised there's anyone to watch the parade because we have so many community organizations who show up and show their Wheat Ridge proud. It was just a real delight to see the students and the community organizations and the businesses, goats on a float, ducks on a truck. We had just like a lot of creativity and a lot of spirit, and I think it truly was Wheat Ridge at its best. I also had a lot of fun at the Carnation Festival. I volunteered serving beer. And people from all around the metro area were coming up and just randomly talking to me and saying how spectacular it was and how they come every year. So I just think we have a lot of reasons to be really proud of that and to be 50 years into celebrating who we are is a lot of work. And I happen to know Leah Dozeman put in a lot of work and a lot of other volunteers. But it's really great to see our community show out. So thank you for all of that, and I am already looking forward to our 50 first. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is John McKay and Judy Capra on deck.
Good evening, Mayor Starker, Wheat Ridge City Council. My name is John Mackey.
Mackey, okay.
Irish.
All right.
And thank you, and our manager Patrick Goff. I'm just here to say thank you. And so I don't know any of you in council, but I want you to know, I've been a longtime police person in this county and in this state, and I'm amongst friends with our police folks here. I gave you each a letter that if, when you have time, it would take me too many minutes to read it. But it will go over what happened when the City of Wheat Ridge and your staff came to our assistance when we had a 17-hour SWAT call just a couple of weeks ago. And so the point is whenever, obviously, as you well know, we do collaborative efforts in this county, whether it's our Jeffcom dispatch center, whether it's our SWAT team, whether it's our evidence team, all those teams are so important with us collectively in this county. And what your team did allowed our city to go through a 17-hour incident with no one hurt, okay? That's just a very difficult thing to do. It's an impossible thing to do for smaller cities, and Wheat Ridge would be a smaller city in that thing. So I just want to let council know and manager Goff know that that letter is from myself and our mayor. I had the sheriff come before the city council of Edgewater just last week for a couple of different things. But one of the things I did is I just wanted to say thank you. So I will be going out to all our city councils in our county because ultimately, I need you to know, after all these years, we do have a gold standard of collaboration in this county amongst our partnerships in law enforcement. And I just want to let you know, your support of all those collaborative efforts allows that to continue, and I thank you.
Thank you, Chief McKay. Our next speaker is Judy Capra and Lynn, I hope it's Martinez, but we'll see, on deck.
I'll be pretty brief tonight. I wanted to just kind of give a little update.
Would you give us your name, please?
Judy Capra, C-A-P-R-A, at 7070 West 43rd Avenue. And I wanted an update on the petition. Lynn Martinelli and I are the designated representatives for that petition. It opposed the rezoning of four lots on Uppam from R3 to PRD. Along with 33 other circulators, we collected over 2,000 signatures, with enough being validated that we met the 1,642 count that was required. Well, after we received the certificate of sufficiency, we thought we were done. But we looked over the signatures and we said, okay, there's 37 signatures still here that look like they should be validated, so we'll turn those back in and ask the clerk to recheck them. And then we found out there was such a thing as a protest. And if we read the city charter, we thought there really shouldn't be a protest, should there? And then if there's a protest, it follows up with a hearing, which I think we're kind of caught up in now. And that's part of what I'm concerned about because as far as I can read, there's nothing in our charter about a protest. It says very explicitly that once the certificate of sufficiency has been delivered, the city council can either reverse their decision or send it to the ballot. There is no time period in there, there's nothing that says after five days or 10 days or you can have a protest. And there's nothing in there that says, see the city, see the Colorado Constitution or the Colorado Code for information about protests. It's silent about a protest. So I take that to mean that the Wheat Ridge people who framed this didn't want us to have protests. Then if we do have a protest, which it looks like might happen, then we need a hearing officer. And again, the Wheat Ridge Charter is silent about that, but if you look at the state law, it said the hearing officer is to be the city clerk, which in this case is Janelle Shaver. Well, the McLeod's who are filing a protest that would require this hearing, they say she'd be disqualified because she has an interest in the outcome and/or is prejudiced. That really is pretty general mudslinging, just hoping something would stick, because wouldn't that be true for any referendum in the city clerk? Anything you could say, yeah, she has an interest in it, I hope so, and that she's prejudiced. So it seems like we should definitely, if there is a protest, then the Wheat Ridge city clerk should be the hearing officer. But the bigger question is, should we be having a protest? Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Lynn Martinelli, my apologies.
My name is Lynn Martinelli, M-A-R-T-I-N-E-L-L-I, 4240 Uppam. I'm on the block of the development Jibby just reviewed. I want to second everything she says, and I just want to be here to put on record how Janelle Shaver helped us through this process. We were all volunteers, all citizens, all novices. It was an extremely time-consuming thing for all of us, and I know it took away from her regular duties and her personal home duties. And I want to thank both her and Robin for giving us so much time and say that she did an excellent job. I just want to be on record for that. Thank you, Janelle.
Thank you. That's all of the people I have signed up to speak. Is there anyone who has not signed the list who would like to speak on citizens' right to speak on any item not on the agenda? Come forward, please. Give us your name and address.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My name is Oderka Figlus. My address is 10580 West 38th. As many of you know, I come to speak with you with at least some trepidation, but I will try to choose my words carefully. I was one of the circulators of this referendum petition, and I've been trying to help the citizens. Well, I think it's, if anybody thinks it's easy to raise about 2,000 signatures in a very short period of time, it's not. It's extremely difficult, but I think all of us that were carrying petitions were bolstered by knowing that so many in the community really felt strongly in support of this referendum petition. And were very willing to share their time with us. I actually would like to speak to some of the people that are watching because there are issues that you guys know very, very well, but I think there's a lot of people out there that might not have been exposed to some of these terms. For example, home rule city. And when Wheat Ridge was formed, the people of Wheat Ridge voted to become a home rule city, which means they adopted a charter which pretty much acts like our constitution as I understand it. I was looking at the handbook from the state and it says it provides the city with the greatest authority. And that home rule cities ordinances supersede conflicting state laws. So we have the authority to make our own laws, and then if there's a conflict between our laws and what a statutory city would have, then our laws would be what should be followed. On the referendum, that same handbook states that municipalities may regulate the process of referendum. And as an example, state statutes limit the types of actions that can be subject to a referendum, while our charter specifically states that any ordinance that is passed can be subject to referendum. And those referendum rights, as I understand it, they start with the state constitution. And it's the opportunity for people to bring issues to the ballot box. And really, the proper way to protest against a petition, a referendum, is to go to the ballot box and vote against it, you know, or to go out and through the election process campaign, whichever side that you feel. I think even if we say that there are state rules that apply here, then the state rules, if you look at the first part of it, it says the most important thing is not to abridge the people's right to have a chance to get to the ballot box with their issues. Anyway, so I hope that's helpful to the people that are watching. I know you guys know this very well, and thank you for bearing with me.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak on a public comment that hasn't had a chance?
Good evening. My name is Ehor Figlus. I live at 9775 West 36th Avenue. In view of some of the things that have come up before council in the recent past, I would like to suggest that the council consider doing several things as far as notifications on zonings. One is that the signs that are to be posted on properties that are rezoned should be four times the size, double the dimensions, four times the size of area so that they're clearly visible to people in the area. Number two is I think that the legal protest distance should be doubled from what it is now. And I think notification for zoning should be extended to 1,000 feet. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here to speak on public comment? We'll close our public comment portion.
Mr. Mayor, you have one sheet on the budget in front of you as well. I think there's one person signed up on that.
Then we will go to, because that does, sucked right in there on A. Okay? We will go to citizens' right to speak, A, public input opportunity on the 2020 budget. And I have a sign-up sheet here, and Rachel Hultin is our first speaker on this.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Rachel Hultin, H-U-L-T-I-N. And my two points of input on the city budget, as you guys are in the process of preparing it for the September meeting. First is I just want to follow up. We were in here last week talking about implementation of the NRS recommendations. And included in those recommendations are two neighborhood specialists. And I strongly encourage the city to move forward with fully funding those and getting those hired as quickly as possible so we can move forward with the community engagement tour. The second point that I'd like to have you guys consider for budget is for a couple of years, there's been a priority of getting a sustainability coordinator at, I believe, Point 5 FTE. And Sustainable Wheat Ridge is doing really important work. A lot of it is stuff that actually is saving our city money and is good stewardship of our city's resources. And really, we can't maximize the efforts of our very capable Sustainable Wheat Ridge Committee, I guess they are, if we don't have someone who's dedicated on city staff who's helping oversee some of that work. I know they're looking right now at bringing the Sustainable Neighborhoods program to Wheat Ridge, which originated in Lakewood. It is actually a nationally recognized program that really capitalizes on residents' interests and what they think is best for their neighborhood and their community. And I think it very much aligns with Wheat Ridge. And something like that really takes dedicated staff. So again, two positions within community planning for the neighborhood revitalization strategy, and then a halftime position for Sustainable Wheat Ridge. Thank you.
Thank you. I have no one else signed up to speak on the budget, but if anyone here has not signed up but would like to speak on the 2020 budget, you may come forward now. All right, I don't see anyone, so thank you for making sure that got on my calendar. So we will turn the page and go to Agenda Item Number One. Mr. Matthews, would you please introduce Agenda Item Number One?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item number one is Resolution Number 34-2019. A resolution approving a major subdivision plat for property zoned Residential 3, R3, and located at 11661 West 44th Avenue, Case Number WS-19-01/Riverside Terrace. This is a quasi-judicial issue. And at issue, the applicant is requesting approval of a major subdivision for an approximately 1.52-acre property located at 11661 West 44th Avenue. Purpose of this subdivision request is to establish lot lines, tracks, easements, and right-of-way dedication for an 18-unit townhome development in the residential R3 zone district.
Thank you. As Mr. Matthews indicated, this is a public hearing, quasi-judicial. If you intend to give testimony in this public hearing, would you please stand and raise your right hand? You affirm the testimony that you will give in this matters of truth as you understand it. You may sit down. Mr. Goff, we have a staff presentation.
We do. Our planner, Scott Cutler.
Mr. Cutler, please proceed.
All right. My name is Scott Cutler. I'm a planner with the City of Wheat Ridge Community Development Department. We're here to hear Case Number WS-1901, which is a request for approval of a major subdivision at 11661 West 44th Avenue. I'd like to enter into the public record the contents of this case file, the subdivision regulations, and this digital presentation. Properties within the City of Wheat Ridge and all appropriate notification and posting requirements have been met. Therefore, city council has jurisdiction to hear the case.
Would you wait just one moment and let me open the public hearing as of when you started speaking? Please proceed.
All right. With that, this is a 2016 aerial view of the property.
Can we turn down the lights, please, in the back? There we go.
There we go. I can see it a little better from my angle. All right, so the property is about one and a half acres. It's currently vacant. It was formerly a single-family lot, and it's a block east of Tabor Street. Surrounding area is a mix of uses. To the west are multifamily apartment buildings, to the east is a single-family, to the north are duplexes, and to the south are commercial properties. This is a zoning map of the area. The site is zoned R3, Residential 3, which allows single-family duplexes and townhomes up to 12 units per acre. There's a mix of zonings in the area which matches the mix of uses, so you can see adjacent. Multifamily is also zoned R3. You've got commercial across the street, planned residential to the northwest, and so on and so forth. So the request tonight is for 18 townhome lots, which are allowed under the current R3 zoning. And those 18 lots would be spread across three townhome buildings. There would also be four tracts that are commonly maintained, alleys to have driveways for the units, and the alleys are plotted as access easements on the plat, and then also utility easements and drainage easements. City council review of this plat as the final step in the approvals process. And the major subdivision is needed tonight to sell the lots separately as townhomes. So condos and apartments do not require a major plat that would also be allowed under this zoning. Subdivision plats do not change the zoning or permitted uses. It's merely to create, develop... It's merely to create developable parcels for land use that is already permitted. So this is the request this evening. The plat consists of five pages. Those are in the staff report. But this is a closer view of the plat. Shows three groups of townhomes that are outlined in orange. And these lots include the building, driveway, and private front patio areas. The rest of the subdivision is commonly maintained by the HOA, including the driveways, alleys, landscaped areas, and drainage tracts. Landscaped areas are generally outlined in green, as you can see on the screen. And then the drainage tract is located north of the northern alley and is shown in blue. And then a small right-of-way dedication is in the southeast corner, and that's to allow for the construction of a sidewalk in that corner. The remaining pages of the plat are provided in the staff report, and they cover the easements, such as for sanitary, drainage, water, Excel, and access. The process, so Wheat Ridge is not a full-service city. We sent the application on referral to outside agencies, fire, water, sanitation, and completed an internal review. At this point, all documents are considered approvable from staff's perspective, including the plat, site plan, and civil documents, and there are no remaining concerns from the outside agencies. So Planning Commission heard the case on June 6th. They continued the hearing to obtain more traffic information. And on July 18th, staff provided that information, confirming that the trip generation report did not warrant any additional improvements on 44th Avenue. Planning Commission then recommended approval of the plat on July 18th. For this hearing, the property was posted for 15 days, and letters were sent to property owners within a 300-foot radius. We did not receive any phone calls or letters from surrounding property owners or residents. Conclusions, staff has concluded the request meets the subdivision regulations, and all agencies can serve the property. It will allow the development of the site to proceed under the R3 zoning. For all those reasons, staff is recommending approval of the request, and recommended conditions of approval are provided in the staff report. At this point, I'm able to answer questions, and the applicant is in attendance as well and is also available. Thanks.
Thank you. Before we go to questions from council, I'd like to open it up for comments from the public. I have no one signed up to speak on this item at this time. Is there anyone here who would like to speak on this item, number one? I don't see anyone to speak, so we will go to questions from council of the staff or of the applicant. Ms. Dozeman.
Can you give a brief overview of the traffic analysis that she provided to Planning Commission? And what were the results of that?
Sure. So on June 6th, Planning Commission requested more information on traffic in the area. And I can actually pull up the map of the site to show you a little bit better. So there was a question about whether the amount of units would warrant an acceleration lane onto 44th Avenue, which, based on, you know, we didn't want to give information during the hearing that wasn't backed up by something. So we actually requested a report provided by the applicant, a trip generation study that then Public Works reviewed independently and showed that no acceleration or deceleration lanes or additional turn lanes would be required on 44th Avenue. So that was presented at the July 18th hearing in front of Planning Commission.
Are there further questions from council of Mr. Urban?
With respect to the adjacent property that is currently being developed, or in the instance that an adjacent property is not developed, what's the status with the fire truck turnaround and how would that be handled if that additional property isn't developed?
I'll leave that to the applicant. A condition of approval that staff is recommending is that prior to recordation of this subdivision plat, that easement, that off-site fire turnaround easement would be required to be plotted, and we would need to see that, staff would need to see that before we could then take the plat to the county to get recorded. So the plat would come after the fire turnaround, which would be a requirement.
Thank you. Additional questions from council of staff or the applicant? Any further questions before I close the public hearing? I'm going to close the public hearing, and a motion is in order. Mr. Matthews.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The recommended motion. I move to approve Resolution Number 34-2019, a resolution approving a major subdivision for property located at 11661 West 44th Avenue and zoned Residential R3 for the following reasons. Number one, City Council has conducted a proper public hearing that meets all public notice requirements as required by Section 26-109 and 26-407 of the Code of Laws. Number two, the subdivision plat has been found in compliance with Article 4 of Chapter 26 of the Code of Laws. Number three, all agencies can provide services to the property with improvement installed at and with the following conditions. Number one, prior to recordation, the applicant shall pay the required fees in lieu of Parkland dedication. Number two, the developer shall enter into a subdivision improvement agreement and lot sale restriction covenant agreement prior to recordation of the subdivision plat. Number three, prior to issuance of building permits, the developer shall provide homeowners' association covenants for review and approval by staff. And number four, an emergency access easement to allow the subdivision to function independently in the event that the adjacent parcel is not developed shall be recorded by separate instrument prior to the recordation of the subdivision plat.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion, and the second is their discussion on the motion. Mr. Matthews.
I'll keep this brief. For the last several years, many, many, many of our citizens have been asking us not to go down the road that seems to be more traveled these days of high-density developments. And for the last several years, the only thing I've seen coming before us is high-density Good example, you know, our project at the Corners was supposed to originally start with 38 townhomes. It now has several hundred apartments. And you've all seen the parking structure where those apartments are going to go in. I just can't imagine why we can't start listening to our citizens. I don't know what it's going to take, and we're going to get into that issue.
Please, would you please refrain from any cheers or jeers?
We're going to get into that issue when we talk about the hearing for the petition to reverse a council decision for another, yet another, high-density development. And I know I'm sounding like a broken record, but as long as we keep following in that same track on the vinyl, it's just going to keep bouncing back at us. Thank you.
Ms. Davis?
I completely understand what Mr. Matthews is saying. However, this is zoned R3, and it's meeting the R3 requirements, so we're not going any further into what the zoning is allowing for this piece of property. So based off of what staff has outlined, it's within the zoning requirements and allotment for this piece of property. So the developer or development is within the rights of R3 here for this piece of property. So they are meeting what's already zoned in this area. So they are within their rights, and we're not doing anything that's not already zoned in this area.
Additional discussion? Mr. Matthews?
You know, it's funny, I hear about zoning areas having rights. Our citizens have rights, and that's part of the reason why we're here, is to bring their will and their wants to how zones are applied and what kind of developments we allow within those zones. There's hundreds of different things that could happen in an R3 development, including a single house. And I think we just need to keep pointing out to our council that citizens don't want high-density development in our city, and it's time we listen. Thank you.
Ms. Dozeman?
So I'd like just to follow up on that, because I also completely understand where you're coming from, but per the staff presentation, there, a use by right in this zoning would allow for up to 18 apartments if they would like. Right next to it is also a high-density project. We have talked with our constituents about where development is appropriate and along our major corridors is appropriate. If we want to protect our neighborhoods, we need to go through the public process and allow for those citizens to have more of a say before these developments start to go underway. But in this particular case, a use by right in this zoning allows for up to 18 units, per the acreage.
Additional discussion on the motion? Seeing none, will the clerk please poll the council?
Motion carries seven to one, with Councilmember Matthews voting no.
Thank you. We will move to item number two. Mr. Keeter, will you please introduce item number two?
Thank you. Council Bill Number 10-2019, An Ordinance Amending Chapter 2 of the Wheat Ridge Code of Laws Regarding a Code of Ethics for City Officers and Employees. At issue, this ordinance amends Chapter 2 of the Code of Laws to implement an ethics code for city officers and employees. While certain ethics matters are governed by the Home Rule Charter, that coverage is incomplete, this ordinance implements a gift ban, a provision on use of confidential information, and a procedure for enforcement.
Thank you. This is a public hearing, an ordinance on second reading. Will the clerk please provide an ordinance number?
This will be ordinance number 1671.
Okay, I'm going to open the public hearing. It is not quasi judicial, so we don't need to swear anybody in. Mr. Goff, do we have a staff presentation on this?
Yeah, our city attorney, Mr. Dahl.
Mr. Dahl, please proceed.
Thank you. Council has seen this issue at study session, and this ordinance is an outcome of that study session discussion. As Councilmember Keeter described in the description of the issue, we do have, the city does have a couple of provisions in the charter on conflicts of interest, but they're really pretty minimal. And the reason this ordinance is in front of you, as I described in the study session, is that in 2006, there's an amendment to the Colorado Constitution that created a series of ethical rules for public officials in Colorado, and also created the Independent Ethics Commission, which is a state commission, to enforce those rules. It had been assumed that home rule municipalities, if they had anything on the books, all of the, any ethics charges would always be brought locally. That was challenged in the City of Glendale within the last year. And the court in that case did hold that Glendale's system was complete enough to displace the requirements of the Constitution, because the Constitution in this particular case specifically says, home rule cities may displace these rules with their own. But it was clear to me in reading that case that Glendale's system was a much more complete system than the City of Wheat Ridge's system. And so I advise the council, and you've heard me say this before, but I'll say it for the public record, that I advise the council that with the minimal language in the city's charter, I think that leaves the city in the position of, if there's an ethical complaint of one sort or another, that that could be lodged with the Independent Ethics Commission and held at the state level rather than here at the local level. And it's for that reason that this ordinance fills in the gaps, so that the city has a complete system, just as Glendale did, and was able to handle all their complaints locally. So with that said, as was mentioned in the issue, there are only three areas that this ordinance addresses. Gifts and gratuities. And it says that you should not accept a gift that would improperly affect your decision-making. And it says that the gift that would improperly influence is a gift of substantial economic benefit. Then it lists, the ordinance lists a number of things which aren't substantial economic benefits, that you receive all the time and shouldn't place you in that kind of situation, such as the reimbursement for necessary expenditures, expenses, excuse me, insignificant non pecuniary gifts, like a pen or a bookmark or things like that. The fact that you get a salary, council members do receive salaries for their work, and that's not something that would be considered an inappropriate gift under the statute. These all have to be carved out. Those carve-outs are largely based on the state statute applicable generally to public officials. And so I wanted to let you know that you're in good company there. It's a pretty standard list. There's a section in the ordinance on conflicts of interest, which references the two charter sections, and then goes on to say that no officer or employee shall use confidential information to further their own personal financial interests. And again, these are all written down as a result of direction you gave me in study session, so this is really part of a long process. Lastly, the ordinance addresses enforcement, because it's important to say, okay, we've got these rules, now where do they get enforced? And the ordinance says that with respect to allegations against elected officials, which would be the council, the mayor, the clerk, and the treasurer, it is the council that has exclusive enforcement authority. With respect to any complaints against city employees, it is the city manager that has that authority. And that, of course, is consistent with our charter, which places the control of all city employees under the city manager. And there's a process for distinguishing between frivolous and non-frivolous complaints requires the council or the city manager is appropriate to process those, make a decision, and that's the final decision of the city. You may have other questions of me, but the one thing I want to draw your attention to and ask you when we get into adoption mode to actually delete from this ordinance, you'll notice on the third page of the ordinance, it's under enforcement. Section 2-102, subsection letter I, the last subsection before section 2 of the ordinance that says, "The penalties shall not preclude the application of any other penalty or remedy under law." I'm going to ask that you take that out. That's kind of boilerplate language, and it would be fine in most ordinances. And you see it in a lot of them, and it kind of snuck its way in here. But the whole point was that this be the system, and that you not end up defaulting, for example, to the Independent Ethics Commission after having spent this time structuring a system that you can operate. I do want to make the point about what the limitation on the council's ability to impose sanctions, and this came out of a specific discussion you had at study session that I thought was a good one to have. That's letter F. F as in frank. With respect to complaints concerning elected officials, the council takes action and imposes penalty it deems appropriate, but limited to reprimand and public sanction and not to include removal from office. And that was pointed out in the study session. That's what we have recall for, it's a way of elections for. And the council shouldn't be imposing those kinds of punishments on its own or on elected officials. Let the voters do that, and let the voters make that assessment. So when you get to the motion, I'll ask you to approve the ordinance with the deletion of 202-102, letter I. But there may be other questions first, and I'm happy to take them.
Thank you. Before we go to questions from council, I'd like to give the public an opportunity to speak on this. I have two people signed up to speak. Our first speaker is Carol Matthews, and Ihor Figlis on deck.
I'm Carol Matthews, 3851 Hoyt Street, Wheat Ridge, Colorado. The Independence Ethics Commission, or IEC, was created by Voter Initiative in November 2006 with the passage of Amendment 41 to the Colorado Constitution. Amendment 41 is now known as Article 29 and is titled Ethics in Government. Section 5 of Article 29 created the Independent Ethics Commission with the express purpose of hearing complaints, issuing findings, and assessing penalties, as well as issuing advisory opinions on ethic issues arising under Article 29 and under any other standards of conduct and reporting requirements as provided by law. In the July 1st, 2019 study session, Mr. Dahl presented a plan to the city council to establish a home rule ethics code to protect the city council from complaints filed by the citizens to the State Independence Ethics Commission. Issues Mr. Dahl brought up in discussion were accepting gifts, conflicts of interest, appearance of impropriety, and enforcement of these rules. Discussions followed with issues of tickets for community dinners and such frivolities that no one cares about. My question is, what rights of the citizens does this protect the city council from? Let's talk about issues that really matter, issues that relate to our civil and property rights. When city officials are given massive campaign contributions from organizations who would later gain from their votes regarding zoning or land use and the ethics violation, and what recourse do the citizens have as this becomes the norm? What is impropriety or conflicts of interest? And who will decide if complaints are frivolous or worthy of consideration? Does the city council have the objectivity to decide the validity of complaints against itself? When I was a retail store manager, I was subjected to the state labor board... When I was a retail store manager, I was subjected to the state labor board. I soon realized the real value of this independent body. I had to follow the rules of fair practices as a manager and as an employee. If someone filed a complaint, it went completely to an unbiased person who did not know either party, nor did they have a stake in this issue. These people heard testimony from both sides, were experts on the rules, and made unbiased decisions which could be challenged with further evidence or resolved by their decision. This process was confidential and put place outside of the workplace. We have witnessed heated conflicts on the dais regarding ethic questions that seem to diminish the credibility of members of the city council. If citizens have no independent professional body of which to appeal the conflict, do we have any other recourse than a lawsuit or a recall petition? Does this unpleasant show need to be replayed and replayed over every controversial issue? Or should we agree to play by the rules so that the threat of a complaint to the independent ethics is not a weapon, but an impartial body that protects our democracy and maintains order in our city government? Thank you for your consideration. And I think this up-hem petition is an example of what can happen to citizens if we pass the city council's ethics program.
Our next speaker is Ihor Figlous.
Ihor Figlous, F-I-G-L-U-S, ninety-seven seventy-five West Thirty-sixth Avenue. I'm here to express my disappointment with this ordinance. You know, it's not maybe envisioned that we could one day end up with a corrupt city council, which would then be tasked with judging itself. But as we've seen in recent political arena in this country, the things that people never envisioned have come to pass. Our system, the basic, one of the basic values of our American system is the system of checks and balances. And I believe that removing the authority of the state to judge the actions of the city council is inappropriate. I believe the city council should not pass this ordinance, should refrain from doing it, and that's it. Thank you.
That's all the people I have signed up to speak. Is there anyone here who hasn't signed up who would like to speak? Can we come forward now?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm speaking with even more trepidation on this matter, but I will again try to choose my words very carefully. I ask that you postpone the-
If you'd please reintroduce yourself-
Oh, I'm sorry. My name is Odarka Figlous, and I live at one zero five eight zero West Thirty-fourth Avenue.
Thank you.
I would ask that you postpone either indefinitely or at least for further consideration this ordinance. I think there are too many issues here that need to be really need to be resolved. As was mentioned before, please envision a worst-case scenario. What happens if somehow a corrupt city council manages to get elected? Then according to this ordinance, the way I read it, the final authority on deciding whether there is a problem with corruption would be that same corrupt city council. And it says here it's the final authority. I assume that means that we can't even then take it to district court if there's a real big problem here. It also says that the absolute and final authority regarding employees is the city manager. And I'm wondering about that, because I thought ultimately the final oversight for the city belongs with you, who are our representatives, so really with us, the people through you are representatives, and not with the city manager. Now, this is not saying anything about current employees. I'm just saying you've got to think about what possibly could go wrong with this in the future. And what about the city manager? Doesn't seem to be anybody's overseeing him. He's not mentioned here. Or is it the way it's written that the city manager would be his own judge and jury? I would also like, you know, we hear these, I'm a bit disappointed that there wasn't more in the council packet. Please understand, I know the council packet is for you, but it really is for us, too. And it's really hard to figure out exactly what's going on sometimes when the council packet is so stripped down as it has been lately on a lot of issues. I would ask that one of you council members, or maybe, it's probably pretty long, maybe you could share this, if somebody would just go provision by provision, section by section, of what the Constitution says about the Independence Ethics Committee, and then how that relates to the law that you're talking about passing today, and point out how that particular passage or section is for the passage of our ordinance, how that particular section would give us greater protections than what the state constitution does. I really ask that you give us that education. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who hasn't signed up who would like to speak on this issue? Seeing none, we will close public comment and go to questions from council. Ms. Dozeman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Dahl, could you tell me how many ethics complaints we've had? Do you have that information offhand? Or can you recall any in our recent history?
I can't recall any in recent history. I just, I just, I mean, no, I mean, formal complaints that have been filed, certainly there are, you know, individual council members have, you know, sent emails praising and criticizing the actions of the council or individual council members. But I haven't received, I haven't received an ethics complaint that is to be processed by the council. If that's, it's possible that things have been filed with the Independent Ethics Commission, but I assume they would have notified us, and I'm not aware of any that have been filed there with respect to a Wheat Ridge officer or employee.
Mr. Urban.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As it relates to item ten under C on the second page, it indicates that gratuities received by the municipal judge for services rendered in addition to official duties, e.g., marriage ceremonies. And the way that that's written, it indicates that the judge can receive gratuities for services rendered in addition to their official duties. So are they able to receive gratuities for their official duties?
No, and I think if, to make that clear, you could take out rendered in addition to and replace it with other than. So gratuities received by the municipal judge for services other than for official duties or other than in connection with official duties. I know judges around the state have an active marriage practice. I was married by a judge, and they drive, you know, sometimes a long ways to go perform the ceremony. And that's, I think that's probably the only sort of gratuity that they they need to be protected around or that they care about. So however that could be expressed, I'm happy to make the change.
I think it'd be a little bit clearer to say gratuities received by the municipal judge for services rendered relating to marriage ceremonies? Services relating to marriage ceremonies?
Sure. That would serve the, they have a pretty narrow interest. It's just that, as far as I know. And so I think it'd be, I'm happy to do that.
And then my next question is relating to the Independent Ethics Commission. And if a officer of Wheat Ridge were to have a complaint filed against them, and it were to be found valid, what is the damage to the city if that is found to be fruitful?
Well, it would sort of, I guess it would depend upon what kind of, I'm thinking out loud here, so what kind of sanction the Independent Ethics Commission imposed. If they did, it would likely be on the officer personally. I can't imagine that there would be a sanction on the city as a whole, because the Independent Ethics Commission is really kind of geared toward looking at the actions of individual officials, public officials, to make sure that they they are above reproach, but not governments as a whole. So I think you could conceivably, if this weren't adopted, you could have a complaint against a council member or officer, official of the city that say went to the Independent Ethics Commission, and they found a violation and would sanction that person. But I can't envision them sanctioning the city, because it's not the city taking that improper action.
And then is there any right of the accused to opt towards the Independent Ethics Commission to hear their case? Or are they stuck with their peers deciding their fate?
As presently structured, both for elected officials and for employees, it's, they're stuck with the council if it's an elected official, city manager if it's an employee. And that's the clear intention of the ordinance as written. We could change it, but that's how it's written here. And I would say with respect to employees, you know, we have a charter that vests all of that authority, frankly, now in the city manager. As you council is well aware, the council can't discipline employees in any way, because that's our charter system. As you hire and fire the manager at your discretion, and that's your control over the manager. The manager disciplines employees, and there's a whole personnel policy and system that we, it was important to me that would not be unwound in any way by this language.
So I guess one of my concerns here is as it relates to the Independent Ethics Commission at the state level, having the ability and the efficiency and the third-partiness, if you will, to accurately judge a particular ethics complaint of us council members. So that's one side of it. The other side of it is, do we really want to sit here and judge another council member or be judged by the other council members on an ethics complaint? And what would be the outcome or sort of benefit of us doing it versus the state? So as much as we want a code of ethics and to have everybody follow that, I think the consequences here are that we won't get the result that we want, because there isn't that independent nature of the council to investigate one of our own as it relates to whether they did something right or wrong. So, and so that's my concerns. I'll be voting against this motion, which, you know, on the face of it, it looks bad, because you're voting against a code of ethics. And it's not that I'm voting against this code of ethics or another code of ethics. It's that I believe the state has the best ability to be an impartial judge of ethics complaints by our city council and as well as staff, so I'll be voting against this.
Mr. Matthews.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I find it difficult to imagine that we want to do oversight on ourselves. If we think we have something not right in our police department, we don't go to our police department to investigate a wrongdoing or a complaint. It probably goes to a state agency, the CBI maybe, or the state police. I'm not sure what the exact procedure would be there, but I do know that often state police forces will investigate local police forces. And if state police forces aren't doing things right, then the DOJ, the federal government, goes and investigates them. I don't know of anyone that investigates themselves, except for federal Congress. And as I recall, federal Congress has an ethics committee, and they even had a slush fund, so if a guy was accused of doing something wrong, the taxpayer paid his fine. So hello? I mean, when was the last time you saw a federal ethics committee ever do something serious to a congressman, a federal congressman? It doesn't happen very often. Our whole democratic society or procedures are based on checks and balances. And you can't do that to yourself. So as far as I'm concerned, if we forego this check of having an independent body answer a complaint on this body, then we're going to be way out of balance.
Before I close the public hearing, and we have a motion, and then we can debate the motion, are there any further questions of our attorney on this matter? Then I'm going to close the public hearing, and a motion is in order.
Thank you. I move to approve Council Bill Number ten dash two thousand nineteen, an ordinance amending Chapter Two of the Wheat Ridge Code of Laws Regarding a Code of Ethics for City Officers and Employees, with the deletion of section two dash one oh two sub I as recommended by the city attorney on second reading, and that it take effect fifteen days after the final publication.
Before there's a second, may I ask if the maker of the motion would be inclined to make the change to section two dash one hundred, print ten, C ten, recommended by Councilmember Urban regarding the municipal judge services relating to marriage ceremonies?
I'm not opposed to that recommendation.
Okay, but if it's, I'm not asking, you know, I'm not insisting you make it part of your motion, but if you don't, there will have to be another motion around that?
The, I guess the thinking was that since Councilmember Urban already indicated his opposition to the overall motion, that unless, I did not necessarily see that confusion in the existing language, so unless other members of council believe that that change is necessary, that is why I left that out.
Okay, motion stands as is then.
Okay, so we have a motion on the table. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second by Ms. Hoppe. Is there discussion on the motion? Mr. Matthews.
Could you, in our new rendition here, we have what's called a public sanction. We could do a public sanction on ourself. What would that look like?
Well, it'd be up to the-
That was an appropriate question when we were still questioning staff. Now we're not questioning staff. We're discussing the motion.
And I'm asking for a clarification on wording. I'm sorry.
Okay, Mr. Dahl, please help Mr. Matthews.
You see occasionally letters of reprimand, either oral or written, being taken. I would expect that it would be, it would be something like that. It'd be, if I were to make it up out of thin air, I'd say it'd be a motion in your in your regular agenda to reprimand Councilmember X for the following behaviors. And if that motion passes, then that's a public sanction.
And that's the only consequence?
Sorry?
That's the only consequence. We don't fine or do anything, I guess is the word for jeor-
As written, it's limited to. I mean, the language here in the proposed ordinance is is limited to reprimand and public sanction.
Thank you.
So it does not go on to other remedies.
Additional discussion, Ms. Hoppe.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I seconded the motion so that we'd have opportunity for discussion on it. I'm not opposed to continuing it, because I think that it sounds like there is a little bit of work that we could maybe do on this from some of the comments and from the silence when it came to the second. So I would hope that maybe someone would be able to, or I guess, Mr. Dahl, can I ask you, even though I seconded this motion, can I make a substitute motion also? Or do I have to, or does somebody else have to do that?
On balance, I think a maker of a second can make yet another motion, but I think you're allowed to do that.
I am.
You only seconded the motion.
I think that if we continue it, it sounds like there's a little bit of work that we could do on it. And so I would like to make a motion to continue.
Ms. Hoppe, I'm sorry. Can I just say a couple of things before you make that substitute motion? Because I would support that in continuance, because I want a little bit of information. But I just want to clarify some of my thoughts behind this. While I am perfectly okay being governed by the IEC and believe that that is a manner of checks and balances on our system, we are talking about strengthening a code of laws in regards to ethics as far as we are a home-rule municipality. And I'm just sitting here finding it very interesting that some of the same folks that are talking about how the state government should not supersede our home-rule municipality and how we should not be allowed to be accepting a protest because of the state statutes over the home-rule municipality, and yet we're on the other side of this coin discussing, talking about the state governing us as opposed to the home-rule municipality. It's just kind of hard and confusing for me. So I will support continuing this matter and would like some more information. And I think maybe this could use a couple more tweaks.
Is there more discussion on the main motion? Ms. Weaver.
I would just like to agree with Councilor Dozeman. I think that was well said, and I, too, would support the substitute motion.
Is there any more discussion on the main motion?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to make a substitute- I'd like to make a substitute motion to continue for action Council Bill Number 10-2019 to future study session and then to move forward to council action after that.
Second.
There's a substitute motion and a second, is there discussion on the substitute motion? Seeing none, will the clerk please poll the council?
Motion carries eight to zero.
Thank you. We will go to agenda item number three. Ms. Weaver, would you introduce this item?
Council Bill Number 11-2019, an ordinance amending Sections 11-51, 11-53, and 11-63 of the Wheat Ridge Code of Laws Concerning Licensing and Regulation of Alcoholic Beverages. At issue is the consideration of an ordinance amending Sections 11-51, 11-53, and 11-63 of the Wheat Ridge Code Concerning Alcoholic Beverages.
Thank you. This is an ordinance on first reading to set the date and time for a public hearing. I will take a motion, Ms. Weaver.
All right. I move to approve Council Bill Number 11-2019, an ordinance amending Sections 11-51, 11-53, and 11-63 of the Wheat Ridge Code of Laws Concerning Licensing and Regulation of Alcoholic Beverages on first reading, order it published, public hearing set for Monday, August 26, 2019, at 7:00 PM in city council chambers, and that it take effect 15 days after final publication.
Second.
We have a motion and a second by Ms. Dozeman. Would the clerk, would the clerk please poll the council?
Seriously, are you the second? No.
Ms. Dozeman.
Oh, I thought it was Mr. Urban. Oh, okay. I will change that. Go ahead. Motion carries eight to zero.
Thank you. We'll go to item number four. Ms. Davis, would you introduce item number four?
Thank you, Ms. Dozeman. I'm going to make sure I'm heard. Council Bill Number 12-2019, an ordinance prescribing compensation for the Office of City Treasurer. Issue consideration of an ordinance establishing two salary levels for the Office of City Treasurer dependent upon education and work experience. Prior action, at the August 5th, city, city session, city council reached consensus of bringing forward an ordinance to set compensation for city treasurer position based off of qualifications.
This is an ordinance on first reading. Ms. Davis, may, will you give me a motion, please?
Thank you. I don't know which one to read because I know that it's going to switch. So, Ms. Hoppe, you want me to read the second one, just to, or do you have, okay. After some discussions, I move to postpone indefinitely Council Bill Number 12-2919, an ordinance prescribing compensation for the Office of City Treasurer for the following reasons. I think based off of the discussion at the study session, I believe that a lot of us were uncertain of kind of setting a tier based off of, of qualifications as that's not really a requirement for the city council and, and other positions. I do feel however, okay, so that, that was my motion, and then I'll go into discussion after.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, we'll take discussion on the motion. Ms. Davis?
So, one of my discussions is, I do feel however, and, and I think a lot of us feel this way, that perhaps, you know, this, you know, there should be a charter committee and, and maybe some of the positions in the charter and some of these things should be reviewed in the future. But I do think at this point, it was not something that we felt to further pursue at this point, but to look at the charter in general for the city might be something in the future.
Is there additional discussion on the motion? Ms. Hoppe?
Thank you for making that motion, Councilwoman Davis. After reading the ordinance that was presented to us in this packet, and then I re-watched the study session, and then I reread both of the staff memos, I concluded that I didn't support adding criteria to an elected official position, and at this point, that is how it is stated through our city charter, which is our people's document. And so that's where kind of the conversation started with moving to postpone this, and so I appreciate Ms. Davis making that motion.
Mr. Urban.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And since I've done my homework, I at least want to, you know, present a little bit of information about this so that the next time this bring comes up, we can look back and see the reasons why we shouldn't do this. One of the things in the, in the ordinance mentioned a certified public financial officer. Well, there's only 48 of those in the state, and it mentioned the certified public accountants, there's only 73 with an active license in the city of Wheat Ridge, and only two of the Colorado County Treasurers have a CPA. So what I, I agree with your motion to table this, and I would encourage us to not bring this up again because as, as simple as the requirements are to run for office, as far as being over the age of 18 and being a registered voter, that seems very simple, but by placing our trust in universities and accreditation firms, we're taking that trust away from the voters. And we've never been burned by the voters so far, so, in, in the position of treasurer, so I think we need to trust the voters that they've done a good job, and they will continue to do so, and adding any criteria to a elected position is just not fair.
Thank you. Is there further discussion on the motion? Seeing none, will the clerk please poll the council?
Motion carries eight to zero.
Thank you. We'll move to agenda item number five. And Ms. Hoppe, would you please introduce item number five?
With pleasure. Resolution Number 43-2019, a resolution amending the fiscal year 2019 general fund budget to reflect the approval of a supplemental budget appropriation in the amount of $25,000 for the purpose of funding the Wheat Ridge Business District Grant Program. At issue, consensus was reached by city council at the June 5th, 2017 study session to bring forward a resolution for a supplemental budget appropriation in the amount of $25,000 for the Wheat Ridge Business District Grant Program. A supplemental budget appropriation from general fund undesignated reserves is required to fund this request. The city's unrestricted fund balance policy states that the city will maintain a minimum unrestricted fund balance of at least two months of approximately 17% of its general fund operating expenditures. There are adequate funds in the general fund undesignated reserves to meet this request.
A motion is in order?
I move to approve Resolution Number 43-2019, a resolution amending the fiscal year 2019 general fund budget to reflect the approval of a supplemental budget appropriation in the amount of $25,000 for the purpose of funding the Wheat Ridge Business District Grant Program.
Second.
Is there discussion on the motion? Seeing none, will the clerk, oh, excuse me, Mr. Matthews?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to point out that, A, the money's probably coming from our reserves, if I read that correctly, and I think if we're going to add $25,000 here, we should subtract $25,000 from somewhere else in the already approved budget. I would also like to point out, for those of you that haven't had a chance to go over the packet, that for the last several years, their budget's been $45,000, and this year they were given $90,000. So their budget this year was already doubled. And I don't know of anyone else, you know, we talk about people wanting sidewalk programs and drainage programs around, and I don't see that we ever doubled anything for them. We're just a month or two away from the budget process, and if they would like to lobby us for additional funds in fiscal 2020, then I think that'd be the appropriate time rather than us breaking budget procedure would like to have, and they've already gotten twice what they wanted to have last year. So I'm against this budget change.
Ms. Dozeman?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I also want to point out that within that packet, in 2011, they received $95,000. In 2013, they received $90,000. And yes, they have received $45,000 for many years after that, and it has doubled to $90,000 in 2019. But, and I'll let Ms. Hoppe speak to the specific projects that they have worked on this year, but these are going to, this is a grant program that's going to Wheat Ridge businesses to allow for facade improvements, improvements in their businesses to help them more, be more aesthetically pleasing and help expand in some cases so that they can better support our, our constituents. And so I think that this is a really good program. It's been very successful, and Janice, if you could maybe talk about the specific projects, and I'll yield the floor to you. Thank you.
Ms. Hoppe?
Yes, thank you, and I'm sorry, I'm looking for the email. At the study session, I had handed out a memo that had, gave all of the numbers of the amount of money. These monies are grants for, to rehab our aging commercial building stock. And some of the grants that we do are ADA compliance, because a lot of our buildings were built before the ADA compliance came into play. Some of it is for facade, to update facade. Some buildings that I can point you to that we helped grant some funds to leverage private investment into our aging commercial stock would be the Barta House, which is the house directly in the middle of C+ and Quality Auto. Another one would be Raphael's Hair, which is on 44th, right by Compass Monastery School. Another one would be Hallamay's Cормолс on 44th. And so these, these are different grants that, that we do to help business owners invest into their business. And it's kind of a roundabout because when they invest into their business, then they're increasing their sales tax revenue for the, for the city, and then, and so we're helping them help us make more money. I have, unfortunately, I, because I handed it out at the study session, I didn't bring it with me tonight, but in 2019, oh, thank you. So, so we have awarded so far this year, and we had some, we had some old projects from 2018 that we paid in 2019, but we have awarded $80,000 in grants, and it's leveraged $338,000. And then we started, the reason why we asked for more money for the last two years is because we came up with a facade plus program, which is when someone's making a huge major remodel to their facade, and this year, city council gave us $55,000. We awarded that to the Barta House in the Ridge View Center, and out of that $55,000, we got $273,000 in private investment in our commercial aging stock. So, yes, we have utilized all of our funding, and we still have about half of a year to go, and so that's why we're asking for a supplemental budget of $25,000.
Thank you. Is there additional discussion on the motion?
I just want to believe this is breaking our budget procedure. In fact, this is the procedure for supplemental budget appropriation, and this is appropriate for us as need arises, and this is the policy and procedure. So to be clear, this is not, you know, breaking policy, this is following a specific part of our budget procedure.
Additional discussion on the motion? Seeing none, will the clerk please poll the council?
Motion carries seven to one, with Councilmember Matthews voting no.
Thank you. We will move to item number, agenda item number six. Mr. Urban, would you please introduce item number six?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Motion approving the appointment of a hearing officer to hear and decide upon protests in connection with the referendum petition regarding Ordinance 1667, Series 2019.
Thank you. Mr. Dahl, do we have, or Mr. Goff, do we have a staff report?
Yeah, Mr. Dahl.
Thank you, Mr. Dahl, please proceed.
Thank you, counsel. You have my, you have the council action sheet, but let me, pardon me, just kind of elaborate a little bit on that and, and end up with what your task is tonight, which is to, to appoint one of the four individuals that we've identified or some other individual, but we've kind of vetted the qualifications of four for you. As has been mentioned earlier in the meeting, the council in May, I think it was, adopted an ordinance rezoning some property on Uppam Street under the charter, a petition requesting referendum of that rezoning action, and rezoning ordinance was, was filed by registered electors. That petition was amended, and ultimately, after it's being amended, the city clerk certified it as sufficient under Charter 6.4, I believe. That triggered the opportunity after finding a sufficiency for a protest to be filed against the referendum petition's sufficiency, and that was filed by registered electors. Let me say that it is true, the charter is silent as to protests. The charter also indicates elsewhere, and it's the general rule that where, especially in election matters, the charter is silent or the ordinances are silent, the state statutes fill in the gap. And there's a process in state statute for receiving and evaluating and having a hearing on protests to referendum or initiative petitions, and that is the process that's being followed here. I should mention that a similar process was followed about four years ago on the rezoning for the Olinger property across the street. There's a referendum petition, there were protests to that petition were filed. A hearing officer was appointed by the city council, and, and the protests were, were heard at that, at that hearing. So this is a process that's been followed in the past, and it is the general law that you fill in with the statute, and that is what is being done here. So the next step is a hearing. As was also pointed out, the statute provides that when there is a protest, the city clerk is the hearing officer unless the governing body, you, appoints some other person. And that actually took place four years ago. The city clerk at that time was Michael Snow, and the council, at Mr. Snow's request, appointed someone else as a hearing officer, appointed one of the administrative hearing officers that the, the city uses for, for other purposes, for enforcement of other ordinances. And, and that person undertook that, that work. If the, upon a hearing, once the hearing's done, if the petition is upheld, then it comes back to you, and you are given the choice under the charter, and it's the only two choices you have, repeal the rezoning ordinance or send it to election. So that's kind of a thumbnail sketch of the whole process. The city clerk, and she's welcome to weigh in and confirm this, but she and I have spoken a couple of times regarding whether she would want to be the hearing officer here, and she's indicated no, and is, would ask that the, the council appoint a hearing officer. We've done some work to try to find persons that are experienced and capable of doing the work, and you see the names here in front of you. I didn't have them in the action sheet because we needed a hustle and actually do the checking, which we did. And on Friday, I sent you a letter, and I've given you copies of that memo actually on your, the dais in front of you, and those names, you know them, but I want to make sure it's publicly available. Pamela Anderson, in alphabetical order, Pamela Anderson, who's a former Wheat Ridge city clerk and former Jefferson County clerk and recorder. We have, pardon me, Paul Bassow, he's an attorney, he's former Westminster and Firestone Municipal Judge, and the city here in Wheat Ridge uses him as an administrative hearing officer for, for other matters. Karen Goldman is a name everyone I think is probably familiar with, at least in municipal government biz. She was a longtime Lakewood city clerk and now has her own little consulting business and lectures frequently on election matters around the, around the state. And lastly, Michael Snow, former Wheat Ridge city clerk and is a member of the, in fact, he's the chair of the city's election commission. When you're the city clerk here in Wheat Ridge, by code, you are also the chair of the city's election commission. And that's a commission that we use infrequently, but when there are changes, for example, to the, to the election code, code provisions that we have in Chapter Seven of the, of the code book, the election commission reviews those and has in the past made recommendations for, for changes, and so they do that work. And the city clerk's job, and one of the city clerk's duties as assigned by the, the code is to chair that commission, and so Michael Snow was the chair of that commission. I also recall, and some of you may, that he was pretty active in helping the city do a revision of its district map, because the city needs to occasionally redraw the, the council district map when there's annexations and changes in population, and there had been some, and the map had not been amended in many, many years. And Michael Snow kind of spearheaded- And Michael Snow kind of spearheaded the effort to work through how to draw the map to provide, you know, as equal as possible from an area and population standpoint, the council districts. And that was during his term as city clerk. And it's been a while, I can't exactly tell you when, but obviously it's more than four years ago. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Before we go to questions from the city council, I'd like to invite the public to speak on this. I have one person signed up to speak, Mr. Thomas Slattery.
Thomas Slattery, 68, 69 West 32nd Avenue. I wish to protest this whole proceeding. I submit the council needs to recuse itself from this on grounds that it is a blatant conflict of interest to appoint an officer to resolve a challenge to their own rezoning authorization that has been approved by the city clerk. If that's not a conflict of interest and a patent one, I don't know what is. So, I protest this whole proceeding. I say it's invalid. And I would like the attorney to explain where in the charter is council authorized to do this. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who hasn't signed up who would like to speak?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Odarka Figlus, 10580 West 34th Avenue. And, you know, you've heard quite a bit from people, and I think you've gotten communications from citizens about whether you should be proceeding with this at all. But what I want to say now too is that no matter how you feel about the underlying issue, which is the referendum, I think all of us as the city should be appalled by the attacks by the protesters against our city clerk and against our office of elected city clerk itself. The protesters claim that our city clerk is so tainted by impropriety that she must be prevented from fulfilling her duties, which include being a hearing officer. And what are these accusations against our city clerk? Number one, a relative of the city clerk, an adult relative of the city clerk circulated a petition. I'm so outraged, I don't even know how to respond to this. Does a relative of an elected official lose their constitutional rights? And how do you, as elected officials, control the actions of your elected, I mean, of your adult relatives? It's ludicrous. The other big accusation against our city clerk is that she performed her duties without oversight. Who in the world is going to give her oversight? We, the people, give her oversight, our oversight. She is our elected clerk. And I think this goes way beyond Ms. Shaver or any other individual that's in that office. We have an elected city clerk for a reason. And the oversight, you know, who would do that? The only people that can give her oversight, I think, is us. And to allow, you know, however you feel about the protesters, I don't think that they should be making unfounded accusations like this against this office. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who hasn't signed up to speak on this who would like to come forward? Please come forward.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Judy Capra, 7070 West 43rd Avenue. I wanted to be clear that I don't see any evidence of any bias or prejudice. I did not know Clerk Shaver before this whole process started, so there was no prior connection there. And I must say, she always answered my questions fairly, and I probably asked more questions than the protesters did, since this was all totally new to me. And I appreciated her answers and for her explanations why she was answering that way. There was never anything that seemed like bias that came through to me. I could reply to, I mean, respond to specific things that the protesters listed, but I could, they all were invalid. I mean, they weren't claims that really should hold up. So I would think that there would be no reason to replace the city clerk Shaver with somebody else. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who has not signed up who would like to come forward and speak on this issue? Please come forward.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Raleigh Sorrentino, 4175 Teller Street, Wheat Ridge, Colorado. I'm here to say, from what I know, there's no provision in the city charter to allow a protest. Wheat Ridge has home rule, and the preemption applies here where this referendum is a city issue. It's not a county issue, a state issue. It's a city issue, so the home rule provision applies. The home rule charter should apply, and there is no provision for a protest. You have no ability to protest this referendum. The referendum has been certified by the city clerk, and I don't understand how this process is even moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak on this?
Carol Matthews, 3851 Hoyt. I would like to bring it to the attention of all the citizens of Wheat Ridge, that when our city clerk, Janelle Shaver, certified these signatures on this petition, there was over 2,000 people who signed this petition in less than 17 days. And it really spoke for the city. But she didn't take this as a political thing. She took it, and she took the Secretary of State's software that is available to city clerks throughout the state to verify signatures. She has no prejudice. The Secretary of State software is a technical process to certify signatures. Some of the signatures weren't even updated to new registrations, so we lost some signatures there. And the citizens who pass these petitions took that as a fair judgment. Now, these protesters, because they didn't get their way, and the city council, considering this, is against acting for the people. And these kind of changing the rules and making accusations against innocent people because they don't follow the party line is really stretching our democracy in this city. And we need some changes. So please, consider the fact that well over the number needed to certify, 1,625, signed this petition over 2,000. There were more that had signed after this or who had not been certified by public bills. And so the people are speaking here. And if the city charter says that if we have a referendum, or if we have a, if the city charter says we have a process, and it says that we can make these processes, like this ethics thing, and keep the state from interfering, then if all of a sudden it doesn't go our way for the city council, we can change the idea and reinterpret this, we're going pretty far, city people. It's time we stand up and reevaluate our system. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who hasn't signed up who would like to speak on this issue tonight from the public? Okay, I don't see anyone, so we will close public comment, and I will open it up to questions from council of staff. Mr. Matthews?
Thank you. Mr. Dahl, I'd like some clarifications, because I've never really, I don't think, seen a copy of the protest or the paperwork on that. What exactly is being protested? That's my first question.
Well, I'm happy to answer that, and I will. Let me precede it by saying the protest is not something the council gets to vote on or evaluate, but I promised I would describe it, and I absolutely will.
I think our citizens should know.
Sure. And it's a public document. We've had some open records requests for the protest documents. The city clerk's office is fulfilling those. It can be distributed as widely as anyone wants to, you know, pay for the few pages involved. In the main, the protest does what protests typically do, which is to challenge individual signatures. The statute requires that protesters challenge signatures by protest section number, you know, excuse me, petition section number. You know, petitions are handed out in sections, and you can, you know, space for 15 or 20 names. And so the number of circulators, you have a bunch of different sections. And the statute requires that you identify by petition section and line the signatures that you're challenging. So I challenge a signature of Mr. X on petition section two, line 10, for the following reason: not a registered elector, lives outside of the city, incorrect address, the address doesn't match, or, you know, whatever that is. The protest, as I recall, also challenges some entire petition sections and all the signatures contained therein as a result of an allegation. Again, these are allegations that only the hearing officer will make determination on, but you ask what the protest says, and I'm trying to tell you. Allegation that the petition sections had been disassembled and reassembled. And it is typical for that to be a subject of protest. And in fact, in reviewing the initial petition, the city clerk herself found a couple of petition sections that appeared to have been disassembled and reassembled, and I think rejected those. It's not uncommon to see those kinds of allegations, because there are rules about circulating the petition such that the warnings and everything, it all has to be kind of kept together while it's being signed. And what those rules protect against, without getting too far into the weeds, is I come to you with a piece of paper, it's got lines on it, but it doesn't have a copy of the ordinance, it doesn't have any of the warnings, it's, you know, sign this, and it's something, some other thing, and then I attach it. I'm not at all arguing that they're alleging that that happened in this case, but what that means is that when challenges are raised, challengers look at the physical condition of the petition section and put that into play. And in this case, the city clerk, you know, identified a couple of those. I think the protesters have further identified. Protesters have identified that, as was mentioned earlier, a relative of the city clerk's was a petition circulator. And they've identified that as a reason for a protest, or a reason to, more accurately, discount the signatures on those particular petition sections. So these are all the arguments that, of course, are made. And more or less, all of those kinds of arguments, as I recall, that were made four years ago, actually. Some were sustained and some were not by the hearing officer. And it was, I think, about a two-day hearing. And the parties went through it sort of line by line almost, and each, both the petitioners and the protesters, put on their witnesses and their evidence. But a thumbnail sketch of what the protest is saying, by and large, individual signatures for the reasons I described, not registered elector, et cetera. Some petition sections based upon their condition or their alleged condition, some petition sections based upon who circulated them and their relationship to the city clerk. That's the, I'd have to get it out to be sure, but that's a pretty good summary.
Okay. And then does the hearing officer, who then goes through and re- verifies all the signatures? Is it an independent something or other, or does the hearing officer just sit down by his or herself? I'm trying to figure out what properties the hearing officer has to have in order to go through this.
Sure. Good question, fair question. Hearing officer to begin with conducts a hearing, and hears, conducts a hearing, and hears from the petitioner, who puts on, who puts on their case and says, we, you know, and if the hearing four years ago is any guide, the petitioners then really challenged the challenge, really, that had been made by the protesters, and said, no, that's, those signatures are valid for these reasons. And it's a little trial, really. It's an administrative hearing, and so it doesn't have all the trappings of a formal trial, but nevertheless, you still have some rules. And the petitioners put on their case, the protesters put on their case, to say this is what, this is the reasons we believe these signatures are invalid. And the hearing officer takes that evidence, both testimony and exhibits, has copies of the petition there to be able to actually look and see whether they agree that, you know, on the legal issues of who circulated, that's kind of a legal issue, you're either, you know, hearing officer makes a decision. And then issues an order, issues a decision, a written decision. That is why I believe you want a hearing officer that is either familiar with administrative legal proceedings, which I think is true of Mr. Bassow, or familiar with the election petitioning process, which is true of all three of the other individuals who, you know, have been city clerks.
Will this be an open hearing?
Yes.
And where is it published or noticed?
It will post notices. It's, it is, it's an open hearing, but it's not a public hearing. Let me make that distinction. The public can show up.
It'll be like a trial.
Yeah, it's a little bit like a trial. You know, you're not going to be able to testify generally, you're going to have to be a witness for somebody, for one party or the other. But the hearing room will have it here. Likely the hearing room will be open. People can come in and watch, very much like a trial. That's a good analogy.
Thank you, sir.
Yep.
Are there additional questions? Or, Mr. Dahl? Mr. Urban?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So is this an administrative hearing officer that we're appointing here, or is it a hearing officer? What's the correct designation as to what we're appointing?
Fair question. The statute says hearing officer. It does not say administrative hearing officer, just hearing officer. What that person is doing is really the work of, and it's an administrative process, it's not a trial, it's not a court. We're not in district court, county court, municipal court. So while the statute says hearing officer, the work to be done is really, and the procedures are largely administrative hearing procedures. And it's an administrative piece of work. It'd be no different than Building Code Advisory Board. Sometimes we'll take, you know, hearings, those are administrative largely.
And then, it's not within the election section of the charter, but within chapter two, under administration, article five, section two dash eighty-seven, it talks about administrative hearing officers, and it says, "The administrative hearing officer must be an attorney licensed to practice law in the state of Colorado with a minimum of three years of experience." So does that requirement for administrative hearing officer apply to this case?
No, it doesn't. We, the city uses administrative hearing officers for, as I mentioned, the, what is it, the administrative enforcement process that we use for a whole range of code violations? I forget the term of art that we use. But no, this is a hearing officer under the election statute. And in my opinion, you are free to pick anyone that appears to have the qualifications for this particular case as needed. Chapter five would not, does not limit you.
So going back to the election section then, as it relates to a hearing officer, the hearing officer procedure is relating to a filing of a complaint against either an issue or a candidate. And the hearing officer is relative to determining the outcome of those complaints. It doesn't, as far as what I read, it doesn't provide any remedy for a protest of a petition. It just speaks to the hearing officer handling complaints of, of election law, not necessarily of this. So I'm just somewhat confused as it relates to how are we putting this process in, how are we developing the process for this when it isn't elucidated in the charter as it relates to what to do with a protest? It just seems like if it's not in the charter, we shouldn't be allowing a protest.
Well, let me back up and remind you that I've advised, and it's been followed, that where there is a protest to a referendum... that where there is a protest to a referendum or initiative petition, that that protest is valid, or is one that must be processed. And the way to process it is in the statute, thirty-one, eleven, one, ten. And that statute gives, you know, guidance, not a lot of guidance for the hearing officer in terms of how he or she would conduct that hearing. But it provides for a hearing officer that's appointed by the governing body if and only if the city clerk is not to be the hearing officer. You start with the city clerk, and if the city clerk's not to be the hearing officer, then you must appoint. And that's a unique kind of officer whose job is only to review and decide upon protests to referendum or initiative petitions. And in my view, that is separate and apart from the Chapter Two administrative hearing officers that the city uses for other purposes. No question that the kind of proceeding that will take place, and took place four years ago, was a largely administrative kind of proceeding in the sense that it wasn't a trial, and the rules of evidence were relaxed, and that sort of thing. But nevertheless, I think it's a unique kind of hearing officer that's specific to that particular task.
Just one more.
Continue.
Thank you. As it relates to the election section of the charter, the reason why the city clerk would not be the hearing officer is because a complaint has been filed against the city clerk. So is this a complaint filed against her certification of the petition? So she's done something wrong, or is it that the whole process is messed up? Or my concern is that the, is the city clerk going to defend herself, or are you defending that position? Or how, who's representing our side in that case?
A series of questions there, but let me say that the fact that it's in front of you is not because there's some kind of finding that the city clerk's acted inappropriately at all. There's an allegation of that in the petition, but the statute, if we're to apply it, and I believe we must, the statute says two things. The hearing officer shall be the city clerk unless the governing body appoints another person, period. That's all it says. And then you go on with process. So if, you can see where I'm maybe headed with this, which is, if council does not appoint a hearing officer, then it's still the city clerk's job. And at some point, she should probably weigh in. She and I spoke a couple of times on the phone, and I don't want to speak for her at all and intimate that, but the whole reason I put together this council action form was to give you the process and procedure for your acting under the statute to appoint, because I'd had a conversation with the city clerk about whether or not she wished to serve as the hearing officer. And if you do not appoint, then it's still, it's still her job, and she does it. But I think you really probably should hear from her, because I don't want there to be an intimation that, that I told her she couldn't be the hearing officer, she could be the hearing officer, it's her choice, as was the choice of Mr. Snow last time. And he made the choice. She can certainly make the choice. If she makes that choice, then, and says, "No, I don't want you to appoint," you still have the power to appoint. But if you do not, based upon what you hear from her or me, then, then somebody's got to do the work. And we're not going to, like, not do the work and the timeframe just go because there's a real tight timeframe on hearing a protest. It's within five and 10 days of the notice, which has already gone out. You have to have that all resolved by the 26th of this month, under the statute, which happens to be a council meeting, which is fine, because we'll have an answer, one or another, and council will know whether or not they have the job of repealing the ordinance or sending to election. But, you know, I think you need to hear from the city clerk. I want to make sure that I'm not misrepresenting anything she told me.
Ms. Shaver, would you like to respond? Thanks.
Yeah. I just would say, I would be glad to be the hearing officer, except for the fact that the first big protest that came in by the McClouds is pretty much attack of my capabilities, my integrity, the competency of the work of the city clerk's office, both me and Mr. Eaton. And so, in the interest of not looking improper, it kind of doesn't make sense to be, I feel like I'm the accused, and so therefore, I don't think it's right for me to be the judge. So, that's...
Thank you. Mr. Pond?
Yeah, thank you. And this may be redundant, I apologize, but there's been, I think, in the comment and the discussion, a couple of questions about whether or not the protest has standing. And so, and I know you've touched on it in the last couple of minutes, but if you could be very specific to that question, why you believe that the protest has standing and needs to be adjudicated?
Okay, fair enough. And I will say that the same issue was raised four years ago. The hearing officer in that case heard the argument, legal argument from both parties about whether or not the protest statute should be, you know, followed, despite the fact that the charter's silent on protest, and made the decision, yes, it should be followed. To begin with, we have a charter provision that says, with respect to election laws, unless the, to the extent the charter or code otherwise provides, that the state election laws apply as sort of a general matter. And that's in our charter, that's in 2.1. As well, we have the general rule that's followed in election matters, where you don't have local rules, the state statute fills in. Now, if the charter had some kind of rule about protests, or even mentioned protests in some way, then there would be a charter-based rule that would exclude the statute. But it does not do that. Neither the charter nor our code, for example, describes how you set the election date. There's complicated state statutes on how you set election dates, and how early before and after a general election you can have a special, and the kind of freeze-out dates around a general election where you must have it at the general election. These are all matters not addressed. But we need those procedures. I hear and appreciate the arguments that have been made, and I expect they will be made in front of the hearing officer in this case. They were made last time. The petitioners have challenged that in a separate protest to the protest, if you will, that I expect the hearing officer, and will want the hearing officer to take legal argument on that. And whatever the hearing officer decides is what will be the rule of this particular case. The hearing officer is not bound by the determination made by the prior hearing officer four years ago. That's of interest, I think, and useful, because it's legal analysis. But the hearing officer in this case could come to a different conclusion, and if he or she did, we would follow that, and I'd honor that. If they said, "No, we don't think that protests are permitted in the Wheat Ridge system," and that's the argument, I hear it. I don't agree with it respectfully, for the reasons I've described. But both sides can make their best arguments to the hearing officer, and whatever the decision is, I'll make certain it's enforced.
Additional discussion or additional questions for Mr. Dahl? Mr. Urban, a motion is in order.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to appoint Michael Stone, Michael Snow, as a hearing officer pursuant to CRS thirty-one dash eleven dash one, ten, Section Three, for the purposes of hearing and deciding upon protests to the referendum petition filed in regard to ordinance sixteen sixty-seven.
Is there a second?
Second.
A motion and a second by Mr. Matthews. Is there discussion on the motion? Ms. Dozeman?
I would like to make a substitute motion to appoint Pam Anderson as hearing officer pursuant to CRS thirty-one dash eleven dash one, ten, three, for the purpose of hearing and deciding upon protest to the referendum petition filed in regard to ordinance sixteen sixty-seven.
Second.
There's a motion and a second by Ms. Hoppy to have a substitute, to appoint Ms. Anderson. Is there discussion on the substitute motion?
Point...
Mr. Urban?
That was a, that was a whole different motion, not a substitute of my existing motion. So, and city attorney can provide color, but there's difference between just coming up with a whole new motion and just making an amendment. She can strike the word "Michael Snow" and replace it with the other, but a whole new motion, we'd have to vote on this one and then go to that one.
Okay. Mr. Dahl, we've had a protest on the substitute motion. Would you please provide us some legal analysis?
Oh, not a protest. Oh, God, not that. We covered this kind of territory some time ago, under Joyce Jay's administration, I think. And I believe that the net of really complicated Roberts rules analysis, which doesn't have to bind you, but we largely follow it if we can, was that substitute motion is really like a motion to amend. I don't know that that's helping you. The council's procedure has always been, if you, somebody has a motion that sort of wholly replaces the first motion, you vote on that motion. If it's a motion to amend, then what Ms. Dozeman is trying to do is move to amend Mr. Urban's motion. You vote on her motion to amend. If it passes, then you've got a new motion in front of the body that has a different name in it. That's the best guidance I can give you. I would suggest that it's a close case, it's murky, I'm doing the best I can, and my take on it is, and ultimately, it's the chair decides, my take on it is, is you vote on the substitute motion as amending the main motion to, in its major respect, which is the name of the person. If that motion passes, you've amended Mr. Urban's motion, and you vote on his motion as amended. That's, that's the best I can, I can do. I think it's a close case to say that it's not a substitute motion. I think we've maybe done that with appointments in the past, to boards and commissions, but without the record here, I would hesitate till you've done it, to swear you haven't in the past. Something tells me that you've covered this kind of territory, but I'm not really sure.
Mr. Urban, I'm going to, I'm going to rule that we will vote on Ms. Dozeman's motion.
Point of order?
For this particular type of motion, I just want to clarify before we vote, is this a supermajority or a majority of those present, or we're, what's, what's our
Good question, thank you.
Our deciding number?
It's a majority of a quorum present. There's no supermajority rule in place here. But thanks for asking, I'm glad you did.
Thank you. Ms. Dozeman?
So I will go ahead and reword, so that it's not so murky, that I am offering an amended motion to Mr. Urban's motion to substitute Pam Anderson for Michael Snow as hearing officer pursuant to CRS thirty-one dash eleven dash one, ten, three, for the purpose of hearing and deciding upon protest to the referendum petition filed in regard to ordinance sixteen sixty-seven.
As the second, I agree.
So I believe we have an amended, amended motion. Is there discussion on the amended motion?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
Could I offer something to the council? I don't want to, I'm not trying to speak for or against anyone on the list, but I want to tell you that this should be a person that knows election law and has done lots of petitions. It, and given the current environment in the city, all of you should be concerned about the optics of who you choose. And having it be someone who is absolutely will be not biased, one way or the other. That's not to say that any of them will be necessarily biased, but the optics of it are, you should probably consider, I think.
Thank you. Is there additional discussion on the substitute motion? Mr. Matthews? Just for the record, I'd like to say amended motion. That this train has left the station, so it seems like the most expeditious, at this point in time, expeditious procedure is to elect a hearing officer, and then if we want to do something about it later, but at least let's get it going so that we don't miss our election schedule. Additional discussion? Ms. Dozeman?
So I'd just like to make a couple comments, because I do agree with the public's right to protest and dissent. I feel like it is the backbone of our democracy, and offers a good system of checks and balances, which appears to be the theme of the evening. But I just want to note that this is a good example of what would happen in case of an ethics concern, given the fact that we do not have a home rule law for it. So we currently refer to the state statute or organization as with the given protest on the table. So we've had a citizen file a complaint or protest against the referendum, and therefore, we're deferring to the state statute, which is in place, because we don't have anything in place. And so we're giving oversight to an outside agency, since Ms. Shaver has decided not to be the hearing officer herself. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there further discussion? Will the clerk please poll the council? Oh, wait a minute. Well, you've got to raise your hand, please. Ms. Davis?
So, so I just want to do, just discussion, kind of going off of what Ms. Shaver was saying as well, because I would agree. I think that, I think it's important. I think one of the, you know, some thoughts about this is perception and the decision-making. I actually went to school with Mike Snow. And I, and I think that's, I think it's, and I think one of the things is, is we need to make sure that, you know, I think it is important from a transparency perspective, and to have a third party, so that you do have the protections and the third party in here to make sure to validate that what you did was correct, and that we have that third party to say that. That being said, I do feel that, you know, I'll be supporting the request of Pam Anderson, because I think she's a little bit more removed from some of the recent, as far as being out of the city of Wheat Ridge dealings, and has been further out of Wheat Ridge. So that would be my decision to just support Pam Anderson. I think they're all good candidates.
Mr. Keater?
I just, I think it's kind of been unsaid, but, or a little bit left unsaid, but as Ms. Matthews noted, we have not seen the protests. We are not, except as described today, we are not aware of any allegations against anybody. And I just want to make clear that our, that the decision to follow the recommendation of council is not in any way an endorsement or any, any comment on whatever allegations may be, may be included in that. And I wanted to just note, I admire Ms. Shaver's professionalism in recognizing that she probably isn't the best person to be, to be hearing this for exactly the reasons that she identified.
Mr. Matthews? Here, here. Is there additional discussion on the amendment?
Point of personal privilege.
Yes.
I'm sorry. I just don't think it's appropriate for Ms. Shaver to comment in this situation, unless it's procedure-wise, simply because we're deciding who to appoint, to replace in this situation. So if it's procedure-wise, I think that makes sense. But I'd just caution against any, I don't know if the city attorney has any feelings about that, or what's the proper role here? Because if it was one of us dealing in a situation, we'd be recused and outside. So how does this?
Well, because you'll be appointing someone else, you've heard from the city clerk on to confirm what I think was important, that she confirmed, and you hear from her, not from me, that she, she did not choose to do the work and was fine with you appointing. And, you know, I think that's the, that's an appropriate message. But we are now at the point where you've got a motion, you've closed debate, and you're about to vote. And I would suggest that now it's to the council.
Ms. Shaver, will you please poll the council?
Wait, let me make sure it's clear. Okay, revote.
Yes, on the amended motion.
Motion carries seven to one, with Councilmember Matthews voting no.
Now you have, the motion has been amended, but of course, now it's still pending, and you need to vote on the motion as amended, which is Mr. Urban's motion as amended by Ms. Dozeman's motion.
Okay, so we have a motion on the table to appoint Ms. Anderson to be the hearing officer. Is there discussion on that motion? Seeing none, will the clerk please poll the council?
Motion carries eight to zero.
Thank you. Before that robust discussion and dispatching with that item. Okay, that concludes the business portion of our meeting. Okay, so I'm going to recognize Ms. Hoppe.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to go into an executive session for a conference with the city attorney, city manager, and appropriate staff under Charter Section 5.7b1 and CRS 24-6-4024b to receive legal advice concerning pending Clark Sorrentino litigation and to return to the open meeting at the close of the executive session for the purpose of taking any formal action deemed necessary.
That was a motion.
Second.
Have a second by Mr. Keeter, I believe, on that one. Is there discussion on the motion?
Did we go through all the proper notifications on this? I didn't see it on the agenda.
It's the last item on the...
Is it on there? Because I couldn't bring it up on my first one unless it got changed. Okay, I'm fine.
Thank you. Will the clerk please poll the council?
Motion carries eight to zero.
Okay, Mr. Goff, is the conference room available?
Yes, lobby conference room.
Okay, the lobby conference room is available. We'll take about a 10-minute recess and then reconvene in executive session. And at the conclusion of executive session, we will reconvene in this room to finish our meeting. Thank you.
Counsel?
I don't think it was set.
Whoops. Okay, I didn't activate it, I'm sorry. Go ahead, vote. Motion carries eight to zero.
That concludes the business meeting and now I would like to move to city managers' matters. Mr. Goff.
Yeah, some great news for the city, how's that? We have some dates for the openings of some new retail establishments in Wheat Ridge, so the backfill of the old Walmart store at the Applewood Shopping Center. These may not be, these are, I think tentative still, but getting close. So the Hobby Lobby and the Home Goods in the Applewood Shopping Center are scheduled to open September 8th, so less than a month. Alta around September 25th and then the Sierra Trading Post sometime in October. And Hossie in Colorado, we don't have a date on that, but they're shooting for sometime October also, so great news.
Terrific. Thank you. City attorneys' matters, Mr. Dahl.
Potential ordinance, the state legislature in its wisdom adopted a statute in the last session that's, I think, effective in August that affects the length of jail time that municipal judges can impose and says that instead of a year, it's 364 days. And cities around the state are getting around to, not in a hurry, but getting around to changing their municipal codes. Almost every municipal code gives the municipal judge authority to impose jail for a number of dollars, I think it's $26.50 now, and/or a year in jail. And the state legislature has carved that back to 364 days, I think it has something to do with immigration status probably, but it is a state statute and it does apply and cities are slowly amending their codes. I'm not in a hurry on this because it is very rare for our judge to order jail and if so, only a few days, so it's just not happening that it's that long, but I do want to get the change. The reason I'm raising it in attorneys' matters is to save the time of having to bring it to a study session. I think it's one that I can just draft and bring to you and I'm asking for your permission to do that without a study session.
Do we have objection to that? Please proceed.
Thank you, that's all I have.
We'll go with elected officials' matters and start with our city clerk.
I just, I wanted to inquire about, I don't know who even asked me this, if the hearing on Friday is going to be either audiotaped or, and/or videotaped.
Well, we'll at least audiotape it. I see no reason, if the logistics are available to videotape, we will. We'll have to inquire and kind of, there'll need to be a record, a hearing record that's like any other hearing record. It's not required under the law to be audiotaped, but I believe it should be. Just if there's any further district court action, we'll want a good record. So we'll at least audiotape, if not videotape, and I'll work with you and the city manager to figure out the logistics.
Okay.
That's what I'll do.
Because I was...
That's what I'll do. You can tell people that it will be recorded, we just don't have the logistics of that worked out yet.
Because the Liberty Court recorder, I personally wouldn't recommend that I think the audio that the videographer does is better. Are they able to record without doing the video part?
We could check, check.
Okay.
And you reserve this room, haven't you?
Yeah, we reserved this room.
Okay.
Thank you. Mr. Keter?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Mr. Matthews?
Other than the Carnation Festival was great, nothing more.
Mr. Urban?
I'd like to thank the members of the Wheat Ridge Police Department for all their help in making the Wheat Ridge Carnation Festival a safe and fun place for everybody, so appreciate all their hard work.
Stosman?
Yes, so I would just like to reiterate thanks to all of the city staff and city departments, Wheat Ridge Police Department, West Metro Fire, Arvada Fire for coming out and helping with the Carnation Festival and I want to give a huge shout out to Chairman Joe Demott and the board of the Carnation Festival that puts this festival on. I know that they dedicate thousands of combined hours, volunteer hours, to this festival each year and we had a great turnout, great fireworks, great shows and great time, so thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Weaver?
I also just wanted to thank everyone who came out and especially the Carnation Festival Parade and festival organization group. Leah, thank you very much, it was so fun. I had travelers as far as Texas come for the carnival, so thank you all and thanks for Wheat Ridge for coming out, it was a fun time.
Thank you. Ms. Davis?
Just thanks to everyone for the Carnation Festival, it takes a village, so thanks.
Ms. Hobbie?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Mr. Pond?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
I will just add my thanks also to all of the city and staff and organizers and our citizens that worked on the festival and those that came and enjoyed, it was a tremendous success and I look forward to next year. So with that, we will stand adjourned.